Hold on. Trying to get this recorded.
Thought you were recording.
Somebody else was. Okay, it should be recording now.
Okay. Again, welcome to the Rural Regional Behavioral Health Policy Board for April 2nd, 2025. Valerie, if you would please call roll.
All right, Chair Fergus Laffridge.
Present.
Brooke O'Byrne.
Present.
Senator Ellison is excused. Dr. Erica Rist.
Present.
Matt Walker.
Yeah, here.
Amanda Osborne. Chris McCann. Chris is possibly excused. I need to go back and check and see if he let me know after last meeting if he wasn't going to be able to make it. Patrick Rogers is excused. Sarah Dearborn. Okay, Bryce Shields. And Jerry Sanders.
I'm here.
So, thank you. Chair Laffridge, we do have a quorum.
Terrific. Thank you, everyone for taking the time. Welcome the public. We have a very distinguished list of viewers on the call today. I can see from the participant list. We'll go right into item two, which is public comment. This is an area of four items that are not previously on the agenda that folks from the public can share couple, three minutes and I'll open the floor up if there's anybody that would like to jump in there. Signify by raise a hand and we'll call on you.
Chair, Molly Rose Lewis has her hand up.
Very good. Molly, floor is yours for three minutes.
Hi there, everyone. Molly Rose Lewis. I work in Senator Jackie Rosen's office in our Reno office, which is the Northern Nevada office covering the thirteen of the seventeen counties, I believe. I am our healthcare point person for all of those territories. And I don't believe I've made it to this meeting before I make it to the Washoe County one, but I'm glad to finally be on this call with all of you.
We lost you, Molly.
That's weird. My microphone keeps cutting in and out. I'm sorry. Hopefully, I'm back.
You're there.
Okay, so sorry. I'm happy to speak more some other time, even agendized if you'd like. I just want to make sure that everyone on this call knows about the services that our office can provide for for you and the people that you serve, including assistance with Medicare, Social Security, things like that, immigration, all kinds of federal agencies and then grants, grants assistance as well. I'm also our statewide grants letter of support person. So I just love to make sure that I'm connected with as many folks as possible and let you know that we're around to help and will be following and would love to hear from you about any federal policy that you are following or would like us to take.
Perfect. Thank you, Molly. Welcome to the meeting and glad to have you. Maybe if you could share your contact information with Valerie. She's our coordinator and we'll get that information out to our board members. And then you can communicate with them a little bit better that way.
Great, thank you. I think Valerie is the one that added me to the list. You so much.
We'll just share your contact with our board members. Okay, other public comment?
Chair Laffridge, this is Valerie Haskin for the record. While everyone's kind of thinking on that for a second, I did want to mention that the comment or the chat has been disabled. Just to make sure that we're meeting OML, I finally figured out how to do that, thank goodness. So if anyone has any thoughts or anything that they need or any assistance that they need, please note that that is not, we can't use the chat. So just a heads up on that.
Thank you. Other public comment going once? Going twice? Okay, you got a chance later on. Keep thinking. Okay, item three or agenda item three is for possible action or review and possible approval of the meeting minutes. Form our February 5th, 2025 meeting. Board members, those minutes were shared in a separate email. And if you've had a chance to review those, I would entertain a motion in a second from someone.
Does Matt, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion by Matt to approve. Is there a second?
This is Jerry. I'll second that.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Actually, the easier way to go about it. No opposed. Thank you. That passes. We'll move on to item four. Which is discussion and possible action regarding the active legislation. Number of bills in the eighty-third session of the Nevada Legislature. I'm going to turn this over to Valerie, who's got a very long list. And if we could just be concise on the important ones, Valerie. Otherwise, we'll be here till four o'clock.
My apologies. For the record, Valerie Haskin, yeah, or later, hopefully not. So I just want all board members to remember that the reason why we have the bill numbers listed out here on the agenda is because these are the only ones that we're able to speak to. So we're not going to speak to all of these, but if you do have questions about bills that I do not bring up, please reference your agenda to make sure it's on that list. If the bill that you want to discuss is not on that list, we unfortunately cannot discuss it in this meeting. However, shoot me an email and I will add it to the list and make sure that we can talk about it during the next meeting. So that being said, Nellis, so the Nevada Legislative Tracking Platform has some really fantastic tools, one of which I found that I was able to actually export a lot of my different materials to different formats, just to make it easier to keep up with everything. So that was exciting. Let me see if I can get this shared. All right. Okay, so of all the bills we're tracking, what I've done here and I will send this out to the group after the meeting is this is actually a so it downloads all of the different bills. I've locked the the top column as well as the side column, just to kind of establish different pieces. On this first page where it says all rural RBHC bills tracking, you'll notice there's some different colors being used. The color key, green is for support. Orange is for oppose. Purple is formal neutral stance. And yellow is really things that are critical to monitor. On the, I'm going to go to the next page where we look at bills by category here in a minute, just that we hit the most important ones. I took away the yellow because essentially everything was yellow. I do want you to note that the board has only, at the direction of Chair Laffridge, the board is only taking formal support position on, I believe, four bills. Everything else we're staying not formally neutral, but staying neutral. And we have not taken an oppositional stance on anything. So going over to bills by category so that we can try to break this down by what is actually kind of important. We have the title, description, sponsors, past meetings, action, any future meetings that are scheduled, tags that I've used. And then notes is also, has also come out. So my apologies that this is a little bit messy. When formatting it, when it was downloaded, there were some weird things that happened. First, I'm going to start out with the four active bills that are sponsored by the Regional Behavioral Health Policy Boards. So AB thirty-one and AB sixty, as well as AB forty-seven, have all been heard the first time. We have, you know, Fergus designated that we were going to go ahead and support them. AB thirty-one is that bill that would increase Medicaid reimbursement for quote-unquote non-emergency behavioral health transportation. Please remember that non-emergency is really what it's called when somebody isn't bleeding out and they're not at risk of actually dying from physical ailments. So while it is still a behavioral health crisis, it is technically considered non-emergency. And so what that bill does is it increases the Medicaid reimbursement for miles traveled by providers by at least ten percent in urban areas and at least fifteen percent in rural areas. And then would also pay for what's called deadhead miles. And those are those empty miles either going to pick up the person and or traveling home to the home base for the organization. So this would really do a lot to fix a lot of the issues that I've heard from different behavioral health transportation agencies when they've wanted to come to Nevada and set up shop and provide these services, they couldn't make a pencil. So hopefully, this would actually, you know, do fairly well on that. There's a sizable fiscal note attached to this. Because obviously Medicaid reimbursement would go up. However, it's one of the things that was brought up in the hearing was we're also probably going to be saving money in the long run by getting these people to where they need to be in a faster fashion and out of the hospital emergency departments and other places where it's costing Medicaid more money and it's not appropriate for their care. And board members, if you have any questions as I'm going along, please feel free to raise your hand or just jump in and stop me with any questions you have. AB sixty is from the Northern Board. And this would codify certified prevention specialists and create a mechanism for their work to be reimbursed. And so where we see a lot of certified prevention specialists right now is in the prevention coalitions. Most of the coalition directors are prevention specialists. A lot of their like lead agency staff are as well. And so when they're providing prevention services and planning, this would provide an opportunity to kind of create a little bit more stability without leaning so heavily on federal grants. SB forty-seven, which is from the Washoe Board, provides for that study of like why are, how is health insurance, like private health insurance really able to kind of get away with some of these parody issues relating to behavioral health services? And so instead of just throwing out some random ideas to try to fix it, this actually proposes a study to clearly identify what these mechanisms are and how statute would maybe need to be fixed. So that's that one. SB sixty-eight, your bill. So this bill, while AB thirty-one and AB sixty have been passed out of their committees in the Assembly, and SB forty-seven will, is scheduled for a work session and will likely pass out of committee at Commerce and Labor. We have not yet received a hearing for SB sixty-eight, which is your bill, which would enter Nevada into the social work compact as well as alter language regarding the requirements for annual data reports from the Occupational Licensing Boards overseeing behavioral health. I have met with Senator Pizina. I've also met with Senator Ellison. I've followed up with Senator Pizina. We got the Social Work Executive Director for the Board of Examiners for Social Work, really working hand in hand with us on this. And she's also reached out and provided any information that Pizina asked for unfortunately last week. When I followed up with Senator Pizina again, who is the committee chair to see, you know, when we can expect a hearing at least. She said that she is not intending to hear compact bills at this time. There's a lot of speculation as to why that might be, but as this is a public meeting, I'm not going to go on record and really kind of spout any of those different theories or rumor because it is kind of all rumor at this point. But this bill is in trouble. It is likely because of some of the political concerns surrounding the nursing licensure compact. Whether or not this bill is being confused with that one or being confused with others or the no compacts are going to get through on the Senate side, we've heard a lot of different things with really no, no solid reason for why this happens to be. Board members, what are your thoughts? This is your bill.
Anybody?
Valerie, this is Fergus and I'll just share, and I don't know, maybe some of the board members have the same or maybe haven't been engaged in this, but as you and I have, have we've been stonewalled on this. And even though this is a public meeting, I will go on, on the record to say that we have been stonewalled in this and not even allowing it to see the light of day just because of the conceptual language that they might have some issue in there. So if anybody has any way to read that along, that would be excellent. We have tried a number of angles on this. And there may be something coming out in the press. We don't know. We've been contacted. They're kind of scratching their heads. A lot of folks are as to why this is not been heard. Compacts work. Compacts were passed last legislative session. One in particular is the Emergency Medical Services Compact. And they have gone on record during this session, during their budget hearing, that there was virtually no untoward events from that compacting two years ago. So if anybody, you know, Senator's Office, if you're still on the line, Molly, can push this through. Compacts work. There, there was one bill heard and I don't recall the name of it the other day that dealt with licensure by endorsement. Compacts are very much like that. In that you, you're part of a compact state. So that one was passing through, flying through committee. But just because this said compact and there might be some portion of labor within the healthcare that does not want to be compacted. We put it into it. So we will see what happens. And now you'll notice that the AB one sixty-three received a hearing. And was met favorably. So we'll see what happens with that one. So that's just my take on it. Very frustrating at this point, being the bill, the one only chance that we have to make some inroads here this session. And it is being stonewalled for whatever reason it may be.
So Chair Fergus, a couple of notes. First, I'd like to go on record and note that Patrick Rogers has joined us. So thank you, Patrick. That gives us seven board members in attendance. And then also Jerry Sanders has her hand up.
Go ahead, Jerry.
This is Jerry Sanders for the record. Is it just because of the language? Is that what's? Is there any way that we could, I understand a compact is a compact. But when dealing with finesse, is there any way that we can change some of the headway into it?
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. This is, this is Valerie. So with the compact language itself, we really can't. The response that we received back from Senator Pizina was if you want to amend the compact out of the bill, let me know. Which would essentially just leave with some tweaks to the language surrounding data reporting requirements, which with the other bills that would actually combine the different licensing boards, which we'll talk about in a little bit, may be completely moot anyways, right? Because the whole purpose was to get consistent reports across the board from the different boards. But if it's, if all of those occupational licensing boards are consolidated, which is looking like that's probably what's going to happen, then we're only going to be receiving one report from one occupational licensing entity instead of four. So some of the questions that were raised in our meeting was, you know, there are some concerns nationwide that the National Social Work Exam may be more difficult for some minority groups to pass than others. That is something that from talking with Vicky Erickson, who's the executive director of the Social Work Board, she was able to pass along a lot of information about that and also work that's happening at the national level to alter that test. However, if Nevada decided to remove that test or passing that test from its licensing requirements, we would not be able to join the Interstate License or Compact. So that's, you know, one piece where I honestly, I don't know enough about the testing to make a qualifying statement about whether or not that's really an issue or not. The other pieces were I, I've heard from speaking to people outside of Nevada that there are a lot of nursing unions that are working within their respective states to try to keep any healthcare-related interstate licensure compact from passing because they're seeing it as kind of a slippery slope to passing a nursing compact. Please note slippery slope is actually a logical fallacy. So that, we really can't hang our hat on that. And Nevada is at such a low level of staffing of all healthcare provider types, but particularly our behavioral health providers that it's unlikely that having an overabundance of social work types, of all types, of all licensure levels is really going to be an issue. Looking at the various programs that the state has underway that they're building out related to crisis response, licensed clinical social workers and certified professional counselors are particularly well poised to fill a lot of those clinician positions for crisis response and also implementing crisis services within crisis stabilization centers. Particularly LCSW simply because they do have the background of looking at complex social skill issues and also social kind of constructs that people may be struggling with outside of their mental illness or that may be contributing to mental illness and co-occurring conditions. As Fergus mentioned, you know, AB one sixty-three, the count which would enter Nevada into the Council Compact was sponsored by Assemblyman Haven. That did pass out of committee, so that one's safe. We were scheduled to meet with him last Wednesday afternoon to see if there was, you know, something, any tidbits of information that he had regarding like what the future outlook for interstate licensure compact bills might be. Because if that bill gets over to the Senate side, which it's looking like is likely going to happen, you know, is that in trouble when it gets over to the Senate? So we just don't necessarily know at this point. SB thirty-four, which is from the Patient Protection Commission, that is kind of like the bigger interstate licensure compact bill for healthcare providers that does include the nursing compact. It's also in Commerce and Labor. So the other issue is, okay, our bill and then that bill appear to be the only ones that specifically address interstate compacts that are currently in Commerce and Labor. So are we kind of getting lumped in with them? Are people getting our bill mixed up with SB thirty-four? That again is also not known. And then SB two twenty-seven, which is at the Committee on Education, would enter Nevada into the Interstate License or Compact for school psychologists. Just kind of a refresh and I'm trying to, through some work I'm doing on a crosswalk and we'll talk about this a little bit later. The requirements for being a school psychologist are very different than the requirements to be a practicing psychologist in Nevada. It's my understanding that it's actually potentially a master's level provider type and not a doctor level provider type, similar to those that are licensed through the Board of Examiners, Board of Psychological Examiners. So that's another piece that hasn't received a hearing yet, even though it's on Committee on Education. But again, it's over on the Senate side. So the Assembly does appear to be letting interstate licensure compact bills go through. However, nothing's really moving on the Senate. Coming down here to other workforce development bills. This is a little bit longer of a grouping. So we've got several bills that relate to loan repayment and helping new providers kind of get on their feet and establish themselves here in Nevada. So SB forty is one of those bills. It would create the Medicaid Healthcare Workforce Account. From, and Sarah, please feel free to chime in since you may have a little bit more intel on what this would actually look like and do on the Medicaid side. But from what I've been able to gather from reading the bill, it looks like it would set aside funding that could fund things such as the oh gosh, what's the, the program that is run by the UNR School of Med Office of Rural Health to help get rural providers in? And then as well as the HEAL, potentially the HEAL program, although it doesn't look like those specific programs are mentioned in the language. Sarah, do you have any specific thoughts on that?
I do not, Valerie. I'm sorry. I'm not linked into that bill particularly. I think Medicaid has about a hundred and forty-five bills that we're trying to keep under our belt.
I understand. And it doesn't look like that one's received a hearing yet either. So who knows if it'll even go anywhere? The, this next one, AB one ninety-six would create like a psychometrist type of provider that would be working directly under a psychologist or psychiatrist to implement testing. That looks like it did pass out of Assembly, Commerce and Labor. I will see what kind of, what happens to that when it comes out on the Senate side and if it comes out of the Assembly. AB two sixty-nine. So this one. You know what? Let me get down here. So some of these, three fifty-three. SB four twenty-nine, I think that one actually requires that like creates the, a social work apprenticeship program. If, if I recall any of those. Do, do any of you have any questions or thoughts on, on any of these specific bills? Oh, AB three thirty. So that would make it an appropriation and try to help create a predoctoral clinical internship program for psychology. So one of the issues that we have with not having any child psychologists in Nevada is we don't have a clinical internship program. Dr. Rist, while I know that you're a psychiatrist, I don't know if you have any additional insight on those types of programs and, and any bills that you've seen or heard of that might help or hinder?
All I can release, I don't have specific, specific information about the bills, but I will say that it is often a limiting factor, not having those kinds of placements. So I would say any bill that increases those opportunities in our state is going to help with our workforce shortage.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rist. Okay, coming down here. All right, so I'm going to where are these? Oh, here we go. That's why. It's going, I thought I was scrolling downward and it was going upward. Got all confused. Okay, so moving on to bolstering support and treatment systems. AB six, so that creates a fetal alcohol spectrum program. That looks like it's been passed out of committee. Let's see. AB thirty would kind of help. It, it really is more about sharing records of persons who may be deemed mentally incompetent to stand trial and making sure that those records are available to the specialty courts as well as, you know, working with any existing provider they may have. Let's see. AB forty-nine, that would require, I believe, different types of behavioral health providers, specifically school psychologists. And I believe it would require every school in Nevada to have a school social worker. It, also there was an amendment proposed that would limit that to school districts in counties that cert, with over seven hundred thousand population. So right now, just Clark County. But that being said, in order to be a school counselor, that is an additional endorsement given by the Board of the Nevada Department of Education to previously licensed social workers. So somebody has to be a Nevada licensed social, social worker or licensed master social worker in order to pursue the, that endorsement as a school social worker. So that's something where having more social workers would also come into play. AB three seventy-four. That would really look at training and having like an annual training or assembly to talk about mental health with pupils. I have, I haven't had a chance to dive super deep into that, but I do have some concerns regarding how that is ruled out and making sure that it's done in a way that does, is not triggering for those who've been traumatized. Whenever we talk about suicide, particularly and specifically as well as other mental health conditions, if they're serious with young people, we do need to make sure that we have resources available immediately to make sure that if they are triggered into suicidal ideation or if they're having suicidal ideation, which is, I'm sorry, that's the accurate piece. You cannot put suicidal ideation into somebody's brain. My apologies for that. But you know, if that kind of furthers any ideation that they're having and puts them at risk of acting upon that those thoughts, we need to make sure that we have means of screening, finding those people and supporting them immediately. Let's see. AB three eighty. So this is one that I'm actually going to add to the mid legislative session webinar series. I believe actually Julia Rabi may be speaking to this one. This would revise the language and statute currently surrounding the makeup of crisis response teams and mobile crisis teams specifically. And it would open things up for more use of peers and community health workers As well as adding language regarding co-response teams with EMS and first responders. So not just the most model for co-response with law enforcement or not having or, you know, focusing more on the clinician as well, but really kind of how we can make this work in, in rural environments. So I'm excited to hear that bill. And get a little bit more information on that. But it sounds like it would be something that would really help out our rural communities regarding when we're trying to get mobile crisis teams up and running full time. Other important ones, like I said, there's a host of different bills here. I do want to make sure that we kind of sift through here. Now SB two fifty-four, right here. This would establish essentially a protocol for teachers or school staff who suspect that pupils may be using substances, including including vapes, but particularly using vapes, it sounds like for opioids, marijuana and, and other like non-tobacco substances. And it would require that the parent is notified and potentially DCFS is notified if the, if it sounds like the parent is the one providing the substance. This is something that I've heard from various community members in schools that, you know, a lot of the times when kids are getting their hands on things, they're getting it from their parents, which as a parent is kind of horrifying. But that would definitely be something to, to keep an eye on and to consider supporting as well. Mental health education in schools. Alright, so I'm going to go down here to major system changes. So these are things that would change kind of the organization of the behavioral health system and the state as well as potentially change kind of how boards and commissions are set up. So Assembly Bill three three nine amongst other things creates the Children's Mental and Behavioral Health Office within DHHS. I think it's interesting that they call it the Mental and Behavioral Health Office. Again, I think the terminology in Nevada needs to be really consistent and probably aligned with federal guidelines that, you know, behavioral health includes both mental health and substance use. Don't have a particular opinion on that piece. It has been heard. I don't know how far it'll be going. I believe that one may also make changes to the licensing boards themselves. SB seventy-eight is the hot topic one that has been mentioned with no jurisdiction in many meetings, however, it has not yet been heard. And that is the one that as the language proposed would consolidate or remove the vast majority of advisory councils and boards, including affecting the, the makeup of the regional behavioral health policy boards. And then also would combine a lot of the occupational licensing boards. The widely widely accepted rumor is that the language is going to be amended to take out anything that would affect any sort of advisory board or commission, including the Regional Behavioral Health Policy Board, so it wouldn't affect us anymore. But would really focus more on combining the different occupational boards. Some of the language with different combinations of boards may also be removed, but it does look like the four primary behavioral health occupational licensing boards would still be combined into one and placed under Business and Industry under this bill. That being said, going down to SB two, four twenty-five. That would also combine the occupational licensing boards for behavioral health, but would also wrap in the behavioral analysts. And then that super behavioral health board, instead of going under Business and Industry, would go under DPBH. Safe storage of ethyl means, so there's several firearm bills out, but these two specifically look like they're like more focused on firearms, firearm access and how they relate to mental health and crisis. AB, so just before I launch into this, the national best practice standard from what I, my understanding is from the VA and SAMSA is to enable mechanisms or have mechanisms in place which would enable someone who may be considering harming themselves or others to voluntarily give up their firearm for it to be stored safely in another locations that they do not have access to it. And then be able to get that firearm back when they're no longer at risk of crisis. AB one eighty-one from Galant does seem to match that a little bit more. It doesn't expressly say anything about mental health crisis holds. But it does allude to voluntarily giving up one's firearm and storing it somewhere. With SAMSA, some of the strategies that have worked in other states is having a bill like this in place and then like either veterans organizations that are nonprofit or informal or even state organizations having some sort of locker system in place where a veteran can turn in their firearm for a short period of time where it's safe, it's not going to be accessed by anybody else, but it's no longer on their premises. And they do have to talk to someone in order to get it. It's not just, they can take their key, walk back to their locker and get it. SB three forty-seven, which, you know, that's on the, the Senate side and also heavily sponsored by a lot of the heavy hitters on the Senate Democrats would create a mechanism where if someone is placed on a mental health crisis hold, law enforcement would then be responsible for getting any firms they may have access to having those locked up somewhere and then there would be a court process for them to get their firearms back after the mental health crisis hold has been lifted. I know that this is a hot topic in the region that we serve. My, my concerns with this bill is that if people know that their firearms are going to be taken away from them, will that keep them from calling for help? So that's just my concern there. Any thoughts about any of the bills that we've talked about thus far? Okay. That being said, getting down here, substance use and really regulation of
We have, we have a full another presentation. Can we kind of we wrap this, wrap this section up to make sure the board members have a copy of this spreadsheet report?
Absolutely, absolutely. So this is actually, I'm, I'm almost down to the end here. So AB fifty-five would relate to motor vehicle crashes and would make sure that people who die in motor vehicle accidents actually have their blood tested, not only for alcohol, which is what is done right now, but also for other controlled substances. Which is not done. So that could really help us when we're looking at the true effects of opioids and other medications. Or other controlled substances and then looking at AB three seventy-eight, that's another pilot program to explore use of psychedelics and others to as alternative therapies. Our last one, there's a lot of things that cover or associated with Medicaid, just as Sarah mentioned. So I only put a couple on here. AB three forty would require health insurance to cover certain screenings, which also relate to, it's mostly focused on early childhood behavioral health and neurodiagnostic screenings for autism and other things, which are not necessarily covered by private health insurance now. And SB three hundred, which would also require Medicaid to pay for services, behavioral health services provided for, by an FQHD like Nevada Health Centers, which is the, I think the only FQHC that we have serving our county. So with that, that concludes my rundown of things to keep an eye on.
Or it was pretty extensive. Any questions for Valerie or myself? Hearing none, I will just alert you to a couple of dates on the calendar. April eleventh is the committee passage of any bills out of, in the first house. And then that ties in then with eleven days later, April twenty-second, the bill required to pass out of the first house. So time is ticking. I don't know that we're going to get much traction with ours, unfortunately, very disheartening. But we'll see what happens. So just things to watch for. Valerie will make sure you receive the spreadsheet and keep you updated on bills as they come along. With that, we'll close that and go to Agenda Item Five, which will be a presentation from Nevada's Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy work on regulations related to crisis services. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I will. Valerie, would you be able to let me share my screen?
Just fixed it, so it should work now.
Are you seeing my presentation mode?
Yes, and you're a little quieter muffled.
Okay, sometimes it takes a second for my microphone to work, so I'll also try to speak up. Is that better at least?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good. So I will try, it's just a shorter presentation, but just really an effort to let everyone know kind of where Medicaid's at, coming from all the crisis services that are being discussed, talked about. Providers wanting to be providers of crisis as well. Just wanted to give kind of a background of where, from a Medicaid perspective, where we're at in being able to reimburse for some of these services. So really generally speaking, I wanted to give kind of a highlight slide and history of how we are where we are today. So back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one was a big year. For legislative session that began with Senate Bill one fifty-six that was passed that required Medicaid to reimburse for hospitals that receive an endorsement as a crisis stabilization center. And then Nevada was also a state that was awarded our Mobile Crisis Planning Grant. So a lot of great work began in twenty twenty-one. With the work from the planning grant as well as what propelled, was propelled by that legislative bill. Nevada did submit a state plan amendment that provided coverage for what CMS calls Section nineteen forty-seven mobile crisis services. Nevada references these as designated mobile crisis teams. So this team model is really specific to CMS requirements. It requires twenty-four seven response, in-person response, it must be a team response. A couple other pieces it requires, it actually does not allow for law enforcement to be part of the crisis team. Nevada wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to receive an enhanced FMAT for qualifying mobile crisis teams that fit this designated mobile crisis team model. But Nevada also recognizes we have a very general broad landscape of how mobile crisis teams function across our state. So with that, we were trying to make our coverage pretty flexible. So A to allow for this CMS beefed up mobile crisis team requirement. But then also account for how other mobile crisis teams are developed too. So I'll kind of give a visual in just a bit of all our various mobile crisis teams. The other piece of that state plan amendment also included coverage and reimbursement methodology for our facility-based crisis stabilization centers that were hospital endorsed. But what Medicaid did was really think about the facility-based crisis stabilization services as the lever in our state plan. And to account for, again, a very large population in Nevada, both very urban, but also very rural and frontier. So to account for not just hospitals that meet a criteria to be a crisis stabilization center. But also creating a community facility-based model that can also provide crisis stabilization services. So I'll speak a little bit more about those difference in, differences in some upcoming slides. The last piece I just want to touch on with that I'll get into more specifically. And what came out of all the mobile crisis planning grant work and even the state plan amendment was development of a brand new crisis provider type, provider type eighty-seven, which is labeled crisis services. And this would be a provider type really specific to providers that are heavily focused in crisis services. So not just generally all behavioral health services, but really focused on mobile crisis response as well as that facility-based crisis stabilization. These providers essentially are really connected to our nine eight eight system as well. Again, it's not every behavioral health provider out there. This slide, and I'm happy to give Valerie the PDF version of this PowerPoint too for you all to have to reference. But this slide lays out each of the different specialties that we've built currently in our Medicaid system, but although not all of them are available to enroll in yet. So here I've kind of labeled each specialty and also let you know that two of them are still in development and not quite ready for providers to enroll in. So the first two are really focused on that CMS like beefed up model, designated mobile crisis team. You'll see the rate for specialty thirty-one is more of an enhanced rate as opposed to our mobile crisis teams under specialty thirty-three. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of crisis HICPIC codes out there to use. So we, that's why we've also created different specialties to really delineate kind of what the service looked like. So this slide also gives you the codes, it gives you the rates. What we've proposed, this is all approved and was approved for our state plan amendment. We're now just in process of really rolling this out. So more specifically, this specialty, this is specialty thirty-one and thirty-two, again, really specific to designated mobile crisis teams that meet that CMS requirement. And again, typically your governmental agencies are going to be your designated mobile crisis teams. There has to be an in-person response, at least two persons responding and available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. All specialties under PT eighty-seven, so both mobile crisis and facility-based crisis stabilization have no prior authorizations because this is crisis services. We really want these providers to be able to act in an instant they need to. This mobile crisis team provider type, this is kind of more the general mobile crisis team provider type. Really allowing for the varying nature of all the mobile crisis teams in Nevada to enroll and begin to fill Medicaid. So this is in development still. Without being able to have a certification for our mobile crisis teams as well as our community facility-based crisis stabilization facilities. Medicaid then needs to build an enrollment criteria that doesn't allow for everybody that thinks they can provide a crisis service to be able to enroll. So that's why there's two of these that are taking a bit more time. Just because our state lacks the certification ability. We are working with our sister agency over at DPBH to work on building regulations. Regulations take time to implement those, so we want to get providers enrolled as soon as we can. So right now we're really just working on identifying what's needed for an enrollment for a Medicaid provider. What types of contracts would we want to see in an enrollment? Are they contracted with the hospital perhaps? To be able to quickly transfer an individual that maybe can't be cared for through mobile crisis but needs a higher level of care. So we're currently in development of that. Also, we're in development of that community facility-based crisis stabilization center. So we're calling these providers of intensive crisis stabilization services. Hand it to Medicaid for all of our various acronyms to help delineate everyone. But really this is essentially a community-based provider. But similar to that hospital-based crisis stabilization center. But again, without a regulation or certification for these, it's taking Medicaid just a bit more to really make sure we're developing a Medicaid enrollment. That we can ensure that high-quality services are still delivered as well. Um, but this would, this model would receive a daily rate um similar to that hospital-based model as well. Again, no prior authorizations for services under this. Um, this model is really intended to be where that individual accesses services and goes to and is treated within that twenty three hour, fifty nine minute model. Valerie, through you.
Um, so are the the current crisis stabilization centers um at Renown and Mallory, is that what these are?
No, so they, um, those two are hospital-based, so they are. Um, so I know Mallory currently is an enrolled provider, um Medicaid provider. I believe Renown is um working on their enrollment right now. Um, but they are hospital, they, they, their hospitals have received an endorsement as a crisis stabilization center. So that would be um they're enrolled as of this provider type eighty seven, specialty two fifty.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh huh. Um, and this last slide, again, this is already available. Um, but we have that um ability to have that hospital endorsement to a little bit um or enroll providers a little bit easier um to accept that. So again, a lot in development. Um, but there is some. I know Valerie, you've talked a lot about legislative activities. Um, the Medicaid budget is also included in our legislative session, and we've proposed some enhancements for mobile crisis um enhancement rates. Again, that all requires legislative approval. But um this has definitely been a work in progress. I know I started only back to two thousand and twenty one, but the idea of crisis services and really supporting Nevada has been around for many, many years. Um, it's just taking the village to build this and get it right. Um, and what I say about Medicaid policy all the time is they're living documents, and we have to make them better as we evolve. Um, same thing with our provider types and our Medicaid systems as well. Um, so uh we are hearing what the public says about rates and things like that too. So we're really just trying to account for all of that as we're building it. But that takes me to the end. I'm happy to answer any unanswered questions or if there's any curiosity.
Board members, questions?
Valerie, yes, you're.
Hi again. Um, so quick question. So when we're, we're talking about, and I realize this is probably not the Medicaid real house, wheelhouse, but it probably kind of rolls into it. Um, something that I'm, I'm hearing from folks is that we, we have these crisis services that we're building out for those first twenty three point, twenty three hours and fifty nine minutes, right? And then what about after that? Because hypothetically, I know that the ideally we, they would then either be de-escalated and released or transferred to an inpatient care facility. Um, but we know that that's frequently not feasible within that one day period. Um, is there any conversation going on yet about um how to kind of handle that, that kind of gap? Um, or is, you know, is there anything you can share there?
Yeah, I mean, I'm Valerie, I know you're part of lots of national halls as Medicaid participates as well. I think it's not just a Nevada issue, but I think as states are building these out, all of our crisis systems, we are recognizing what gaps that we have in care. Um, there's talk about kind of that subacute level of care that Nevada does not have state plan authority for currently. Um, and that's, you know, before you go inpatient, it's kind of that in-between. So again, kind of looking at what could be available. Um, what's exciting about Medicaid is it's not solely based on what is available for through state plan authority, but also considering are there waiver options? Um, I know anyone on my team that's listening in is wanting to plug their ears when I mention a waiver. Um, but waivers are definitely difficult to implement, but there's other ways that states are approaching how to cover different services, even if it's not like a mandatory Medicaid benefit, um, to really recognize what issues are there um just across our system as we're building that crisis continuum. So no solution yet Valerie for you, but yes, the conversations are happening, and I think those gaps are being recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We will now go to uh agenda item six. Valerie, this will be your report, uh, looking at the time. If we could keep uh some brevity to this in more than ten minutes so our folks can get back to work.
All right, so I will do, give the, the quick and dirty update then. Um, so again, task force work has generally been on pause for legislative session. However, I'm still working with FSC and HGH to explore some care coordination um work in line with what the Humboldt County Task Force, as well as the Elko County Behavioral Health Task Force both wanted to explore. Um, just so that we can kind of see how that would work in some of our smaller communities. Um, also, I'm working on a crosswalk um that would, that essentially examines all different types of both paraprofessionals and licensed clinicians um side by side for, to examine different types of training, different requirements, um, that sort of thing. Um, and just that we all have a better ideas to kind of where everybody's lanes are, because that seems to be a major point of misunderstanding and confusion, particularly when we're looking at legislative pieces, but also moving forward, you know, identifying what type of provider is a best fit for what type of position. Um, right now we'll take, you know, as many good providers as we can get. But uh, you know, I, I think that it's hopefully things open up a little bit. Maybe refining people to where they're best suited would also be a, a good strategy. Um, I haven't been traveling, um, but I have been providing various presentations virtually, uh, mostly focused on the bill as well as how community members can engage in advocacy. Um, I'm not telling them to advocate for any particular bill, really just kind of talking about the differences between education, advocacy and lobbying, um, and helping them kind of organize some of their tools to, hey, if you want to make public comment about something, however you feel about it, you know, here's how you can prepare your two-minute speech, et cetera. I'm supposed to go to Nashville later this month for the Prescription Drug and Illicit Drug Summit. I'm super excited about that. Great content there. I will try to share as much as I can with my board members and may reach out to you if there are specific strategies that we can maybe look at aligning with um our current work as well as with the uh funding and work of our state partners. Um, CIT and most, I, or CIT most and fast, I still have some things to tie up for CIT. Um, since we didn't get the cost of funding, still trying to identify other avenues for that, but with everything kind of shaky at the federal level, that's been uh kind of uh an interesting thing to navigate. We already talked heavily about the legislature. Um, I've got a mid-legislative session bill update webinar series launching. Um, it's again during the lunch hours. Um, tomorrow we'll have Dorothy Edwards speaking to SB forty seven. Uh, the following Monday, my counterpart, Sarah Lynn, will be speaking to AB sixty. And then the following Thursday on the thirty first, on the tenth, Mark Funkhouser will be speaking to AB thirty one. I'm again, working to get something for AB three eighty that would revise the language about, you know, who can participate in these different mobile crisis teams, um, trying to get some information out there. So if you have any other bills that you would like to see presented, please let me know. And also particularly if you know someone who would be a good speaker for that. Um, we talked about the crosswalk. I'm also working to build shared folders um through Box that I can share out via uh Linktree. So the Linktree is in my signature. I've also added it to the social media pages for the board and myself um as the coordinator. Um, trying to get more information out there regarding best practices, toolkits, um, data. Um, just because I think things seem to get, be getting lost on the NVBH website. And um, right now, there is not a contract in place for website maintenance. So um, we're kind of limited in what we can do without, you know, risking messing it up. Um, there's a ton of work going on for nine eight eight and pushing for more of a launch on that. So um, as you are speaking with people, please remember that nine one one is for physical emergencies. Um, if someone is experiencing a behavioral health crisis, nine eight eight is the number to call. They will be connected um locally within Nevada, particularly if they have a seven seven five area code um that they're calling from. Um, I've been continuing participation in the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, um, work that has been undertaken by the state, that's BSCA. Um, also, we've got some opioid rescue kits um that is being paid from, paid for by uh the overdose data to action grant at the state level. So if anybody is interested in more rescue kits, please let me know. Um, I can talk to China and Scott and see if we can get those out to you guys. Um, a lot of our other projects are kind of on hold at the moment until either legislative session is over or more likely, um, if the fate of SB sixty eight is sealed early on um April eleventh. So um definitely some things there with crisis systems. Again, there's a lot of things going on. Some of the federal funding changes are starting to hit our local level partners. Um, so for example, um, NAMI Western Nevada was hit with some budget cuts. Um, so they had to cut some staff from the teen text line as well as the Nevada worm line. I know that myself and some other partners are trying to look for other funding streams to support them until they get their next round. Um, and with all of the different bills, there are probably major changes coming to the organization of DHHS divisions, particularly in the context of behavioral health. We're just not sure what that's going to look like. Um, I did get a call from one specific agency in our region um with concerns that an agency in Reno that to which they'd been referring people needing inpatient care um had not been uh necessarily quickly responding, and it appeared that they may be trying to kind of push that off until um other, until other care is found. Um, so I do have a call out to that agency's uh chief operating officer um just to try to figure out what's going on and advise them to use any of the complaint reporting um materials that are located on NVBH.org. Um, other concerns specifically with licensure, um, there's a fair chance that a lot of things that we've heard from our constituents and our stakeholders would be resolved by the consolidation of the behavioral health licensing boards. However, um, there's also some unintended consequences with that too. So the different bills are really proposing that people who have never held that type of licensure kind of oversee the licensure of that type of provider. Um, and even as someone who is not a licensed provider, I could foresee that being problematic in a lot of ways. Um, also, there would always be a learning curve. So is that going to make things go faster immediately? Probably not. And that is it for my report um in the Cliff Notes version.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. All right. Thank you, Valerie. Um, with that, um, very extensive, uh, again, please continue to share that with the board. Um, I do have one, one item on the legislative webinars that you're doing with the other, the other folks, are those invites going out to the board members so they can be aware of those?
You know, I hadn't been setting specific meeting invites out, um, but I can do that. Um, I will send those out to everybody on the email list. Um, I've just been so busy trying to perform like full body slam CPR on SB sixty eight and trying to help out our partners with some of their funding things that I haven't had a chance to public, publicize those too much. But I will do that this week. And again, the recordings are up on the YouTube channel.
Yeah, yeah, I just looked at there, did not see them on my calendar. So I wanted to make sure other folks were getting the information also. So let's make sure we get that out. Okay, uh, let's go to item seven, which will be public comment. We've sat through an hour of this and I uh thank you for uh your uh sticking with us as we went through the legislative briefing and, and presentation from um, from Sarah Dearborn and then with Valerie's update. Uh, I'll open it up for public comment after hearing that. And uh, yeah, we can't take action on items, but we can certainly uh, you know, take them for, take them under advisement for the next time.
Um, this is Mary Ann McCown from Vitality Unlimited. Valerie, you mentioned that the SB sixty eight, that it's not even getting heard in a committee. I understand about lobbying and what the difference is and educating people. Is there anybody in the Senate side that we as public members could reach out to and explain to them why this bill is important?
Thank you, Mary Ann. So for the record, that Valerie Haskin. Um, so the committee chair, Senator Pazina, is the one who decides whether or not a bill is heard. Um, so that is ultimately her decision. Um, additionally, you know, if there's any other contacts within state senate commerce and labor um that you may have any connections with, um, reaching out to them is, is never a bad idea as well. Um, essentially, that's kind of where we're at at this point. Um, we've heard from several folks that they've written letters to support the bill. Um, unfortunately, letters are not published on the website until a bill is scheduled for hearing and agendized. So, so it's like, okay, well, we, we've received a couple of those letters. So if anybody has any letters that they'd like to send us, um, by all means, um, we're happy to, to take those in. Um, also, if anyone has any position on any bill, um, there is a public uh position, um, let's see, what is it, like box essentially on the page for each bill? So if you go up to the bill, you know, you'll have the bar that starts with tracking, tags, notes, and then it says opinions. You can click on that and submit your own opinion on that specific bill. You can, you know, it's, it can be support, oppose, or neutral. You have up to two thousand characters to provide comment as to, you know, why or why not? Um, and then that is published and added to a pool that is available um for everybody to view. The information regarding who is submitting that is not available. So um, it is anonymous unless that person states who they are or what organization they're with. Um, so that is another option for anyone who has any thoughts or opinions on any bills of any type, if that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Great quest, great question, Mary Ann. Thank you. Uh, other public comment? Okay, and Valerie, I'm not seeing any others. So uh, our next meeting is scheduled for when?
Sorry, I'm skipping through my calendar real quick. Um, June fourth at noon.
June fourth at noon. Uh, make sure we, I'll skip through mine, make sure I have it on there also. It's populated. Yeah, there it is. Okay, June fourth at noon, folks. Uh, with that, are there any comments from the board at this time? Hearing none, I will call for adjournment at uh eleven eleven and um look forward to seeing you soon and keep in touch with Valerie. And thank you all that, thank you all that showed up with us.
Fergus is at one eleven, not eleven eleven?
Oh, it's one eleven. Excuse me, yes. My dyslexia, what, what can I say? One eleven P M. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great time.